I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, number one, by here and I go back to the board in general, I guess. Okay, let's start with the approval of the 20th point in 2016 and January 3rd, 2017 recomендations. Sarah Meeves, saying my Brownie, oh yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, oh yes, but hey, gentlemen, nobody signed in to vote or uh, well, to speak at? All right, you start ahead of me here. Okay, let's go to presentations, nothing more to do than reverse the order. I guess Mr. Nicky will go first with the O E P A report.
O E P A? I lay a copy of the county O E P A report there that you sent. Sean, here's your copy. I did not run hard copies of the individual school reports. I have those there in case there's questions related to the school reports. Tried to save a few treats. Uh, what I'd like to do is focus on overall, um, the visit, some of the recommendation, recommendations and suggestions that were provided to us as part of the report, uh, much of which is contained within the overall county report that you have in your hands. It's just us, right? I will say that, uh, overall, uh, the visit was a positive when we get to central office. And that wouldn't have been possible for not to do it. Ever so hard work with administration here, um, over a period of days, uh, weeks, in preparation for the visit, to make sure that, uh, that we had everything that the O E P A team had requested that they wanted to see while they were at the central office. So I appreciate everyone's hard work. I know I've been there at times, gentlemen, kind of laughed at me at times, but, uh, you know, it's important. We wanted the, uh, we wanted the visit to go well and certainly want, uh, anything to be missing, especially if it was a compliance issue or code, uh, that, that we're responsible for having. So, um, I wanted to walk you through the process and what that looked like. And if you flip over to the very first page, there was seven standards, high-quality schools, school districts, which we were judged, and some of those had subcomponents or subparts. So there was a total of ten areas that the O E P A team examined while they were here. And out of those ten areas, we were rated accomplished in all the two areas, which we'll get into some detail as we walk through each one of those, um, some of the rationale. You, you'll see the directions that says to self-rate each of the following areas and provide brief citations and evidence that support the self-rating. So as a central office staff, we sat down and we worked through this document together, looking at each one of the standards and then rating ourselves as either distinguished, accomplished, emerging, or unsatisfied in each one of those areas. So that was a discussion that we had at the central office. Again, that played out over several days and weeks as we would meet to discuss and look at the evidence that we had to support, where we thought we were in this process or in that particular area. So standard one, a positive climate cohesive culture. It talks about in high-quality districts, the district leadership team shares sound educational beliefs and values with all stakeholders, establishes high expectations and creates an engaging and orderly atmosphere to foster learning for all. So as a team, we rated ourselves as accomplished. That's what you see in the far left-hand corner of her column. What you see in the district evidence or everything that we can think of that we're doing as a school district that falls under that standard, that would show that we're accomplished. Now what you'll see just to the right of the district evidence is how the O E P A team rated us in that particular, under that particular standard, and then their comments. So this plays out through the entire document. You'll, you'll see as we walk through this, each standard's listed, what's expected in a high-quality school or school district, how we self-rated ourselves, the evidence that we provided to support our rating, and then how the O E P A team rated us as well as any comments or recommendations that they may have had. So I'm gonna stop right there and make, and ask if there's any questions about any of what I've just shared. So as you can see, under standard one, this administrative team, we rated ourselves as accomplished. The O E P A team agreed that as a school district, we're accomplished in that area. And I'll, I'll read the comments here. If you, if there's something there you perceive is a question to ask.
Just wanted to thank this, this, now, above that, it shows the four possible ratings, right?
Right. So.
You selected yourself, your, your central office under this standard of one of those four ratings, right?
So we decide, we, we thought we were accomplished in this area, which meaning that, um, that it's present but not a pervasive characteristic in our school system. Okay. Under standard two, school leadership, the next page. As a district team, we rated ourselves as being accomplished in that area. The O E P A team agreed and also felt that we were accomplished in that area. And as you can see, you can read the comments that the team provided to us. In terms of what they saw. What stood out to me was, uh, the county supported that third, third center paragraph down, building level administrators and tried to build leadership capacity from within the district, which has been a real focus of administration as well as the board, to grow our own people. And with that leadership piece and how important it is, especially as a principal out there in those buildings. And then through conferencing, mentoring, both managerial and instructional leadership responsibilities were taught and reinforced. So that stood out during their interviews with, with me and the administrative team at the office. As well as the interviews with the board members.
They're paid, they're getting paid by that office.
Trust, it should have really highlighted that a little, yeah, make that stand out. Um, standard three, a standards-focused curriculum. Um, we, we rated ourselves emerging in this area and the team agreed with us. And, and I have to be honest with you, this, this has been an area of, of great frustration for us here in the school district over the past few years, and we're not alone. The other school districts out there struggled as well. As you know, our standards have been revised three times going back to when Dr. Jereya Martin was named the state superintendent. Three revisions of our standards, two changes in the assessment, and now we learned that there's about to be a third change or revision. Where we're looking at end-of-course exams for high school students, maybe even as early as, as this coming spring, more than likely be next spring in seventeen eighteen, um, as well as it looks like a move away from the smarter balance assessment in grades three through eleven. Not much detail was given, but when it comes down to being able to, to look at those standards and, and to take the time to go in-depth and figure out what it is that we need to be doing in terms of developing curriculum maps, mapping out what we're gonna do over the period of the year, and each one of our classes in grades, my, that would be math and science in grades three through eleven, uh, as well as benchmark development, uh, creating tests that we can periodically give our students throughout the year to see how they're performing on these standards. And so that we can make adjustments to our instructional, uh, uh, decisions that we make. And looking at the data that we get from those benchmark assessments. There's been a move away from, it used to be a real strength of ours as well as other school districts, and until we've undergone all of these recent revisions and changes in what we do. So we shared that this was a, a, you know, an area for which we felt like we were doing some things in the past that we've gotten away from, but we've done that as a result of what's happened with all these changes, as well as through some of the guidance that we have received from the state department in terms that some of these strategies I'm talking about, the curriculum mapping, the benchmark development, those, those are activities which we've been told do not really align themselves with the smarter balance assessment, that there's no one out there that's doing this kind of work. So what you see here is a result of what we shared as a team during their visit. And they agreed with us. We said we're emerging in this area for the reasons I've just cited, and the team agreed that that was evident. So we, we kind of, you know, self-reported our frustration in this particular area.
Jeff, it says accomplished, the team rated you on number four.
Yeah, so it's up at the very top, Ms. Priestley, very top. So we, we, we marked ourselves emerging, the team agreed with us. You know, and you look at that last paragraph and it talks about the county may consider seeking assistance to deepen teachers' understanding of the new state standards. Every time these standards have been revised, we have provided our teachers with training, our teachers and our administrators. Just as recently as this summer, we had a teacher academy at the high school to go over the revisions that were made this past spring, fair our teachers for this coming school year. So, you know, we, it's not that we haven't addressed this, we've been on top of it. It's, it's, it's a matter of providing them, the teachers with more in-depth training. And, and who could do that? Who could lead that, uh, training is the big question because as far as the state department and what they provided us, we got one round, that was when Trish, was that her first year, you know, maybe she was a superintendent? We had a three-day training session in Logan County. They invited every teacher from Logan, Lincoln, and Mingo to Logan County for a three-day training on the new standards. That's when we, I'm trying to think what we called them.
Was it the West Virginia Next Generation Conference?
Yeah, that was Jereya, that was Dr. Martin's, uh, during her time. That's the only training that the state department has ever provided. It was one and done. Now, we've been out, out here on our own across the state. Uh, we've been told time and time again not to look outside the state, try to bring in someone that might be an expert out there in, in this field. And we've done some, and we've, you know, avoided going to those lengths. But what training that we have been able to get has been provided through our recent two. And, and those ladies have done a phenomenal job in, in assisting us with this, with this piece. So, well, this is an area that we know that we need to continue to work on and, and, and we're going to. We, we, Neil and I was talking this morning about the fact that we, we'll need to put together our curriculum team along with some of the folks from RISA, uh, to continue to take a look at this. And all we can do is keep our fingers, fingers crossed that the standards are going to remain the same. With that, that something will not happen during this legislative session that would cause the standards to maybe possibly be repealed or replaced, who knows? So, and you can kind of sense the frustration there in that particular area. It's, I just want you all to know that we provide our teachers with every possible professional development that we can so that they are knowledgeable about these standards. And if you want to hear something, I'm leaving now.
I, I just like that, that, that the standards should match assessments. When we were mapping the curriculum guide, we was building on assessments. So teachers, different teachers would come in and they'd say, okay, on the curriculum map, this nine rates, this is what's top. So they'd get questions to match that. Now the state has interim diagnostic tests, but it does, you don't know what's gonna be on it. So you don't even know what you've taught it. A lot of times you have and teachers get frustrated and they say, well, that's on there, my kids didn't score very high, but I don't teach that until two months later. So it's, it's, and it's really frustrating because we did have pride, you know, they told us not to do that.
Yeah, we're, we're all craving stability, and when those standards and assessments change so frequently as they have the last few years, uh, it's, it's tough. We want to provide our teachers with all the support that we could possibly provide them, but at some point in time, you know, someone's gonna have to make a decision, here's what we're gonna learn, this is what we wanna do, and lock this thing.
This is not unique up there.
Not unique, right, right, not at all. Let's move on, standard four, uh, we actually was bumped up in this area, and maybe we didn't give ourselves enough credit. Uh, standard four deals with student support services and family community connections and, uh, you know, it's been so much, so much time has elapsed, I'm not sure why as a group we felt we were emerging that area, but after O E P A conducted their interviews, looked at our documentation, that, that group, uh, decided that we were above emerging, that we were accomplished in this area. And of course, they provided their rationale for why they felt so, and part of it was the fact that we had six of our counties, eight schools with health claims on site, uh, something that they pointed to. Those were some, by the way, that was some really good dialogue that took place when we were meeting as a group. I, I told everyone I would have loved to have had some on video in those conversations, but it, it was, it was really thought-provoking and people, uh, didn't hesitate to speak up and share their, their mind in terms of what they felt that we were doing, what was going, you know, working well, what wasn't. So, uh, that's where that was going. Standard five, educator growth and development. We rated ourselves accomplished, the team agreed with us, uh, also rated us accomplished. Pointed out during interviews, team didn't hear about how professional development impacts students. I, I'm not sure what was asked, it's not a question which was asked of me during the visit, but, um, but again, it talks about professional growth opportunities to improve our teacher effectiveness and, and, uh, that's an area that we concentrate very heavily. We have surveys, we have that group, I mean, the names was, we had, uh, a teacher, they, they named it something else now, just maybe the staff council, all the professional learning. So we, teachers have input, there's teacher leaders from every school, serves on that council, they need one quarter, a quarter, they, they, they come here, they come in with what they need, we look at, kind of provide it, and they go back. A lot of it, of course, we provided at the school, and, uh, they come in, the next quarter we look, so we look at, project off what they were accomplished, what's the needs up there, and I'll give an opinion from every school, so that's kind of how we, we, we're doing it. Standard six, sufficient effective management, that's, that's what's broken into three functions. There's function A, which I just looked at facilities, uh, facilities are clean, well-maintained, safe, secure, as if pleasing and configured to meet the learning needs of students. As you can see, our, our team rate, we rated ourselves accomplished in this area. The team also rated us accomplished in this area, although there was an issue with two of our buildings during the visit, visit of cleanliness, uh, that was shared in the reviews. And that was at Hamlin PKA and West Hamlin Elementary School, which the teams were out there to visit those schools for a day on. It, it is an issue, it has been an ongoing problem, and it's something that we're dealing with on the personnel side. So, you know, we wouldn't agree. But again, overall, the work that we're doing, and the maintenance department, and Mr. Gosney, you know, the, the O E P A team felt like that we were accomplished. Under fiscal resources, uh, we, we just, had self-rated ourselves as accomplished and the team, O E P A team felt the same. There was a mention, and while Ray's here, I'd ask him to kind of share with us what this means, because I, and he's told me that I, I knew I wouldn't, um, explain it correctly, but it said the accounting staff was unaware of section twenty-six of state policy eighty-two hundred, which required them to receive releases from the West Virginia Tax Department.
Prior to releasing a check to anybody who does contractor work for you, you're supposed to get a release from the tax department saying that that company's paying your taxes. Now, I use the five thousand dollar threshold in Logan, because if you went down to a hundred dollars, it would have just been a continuous thing. So it was only a contractor came in, maybe they put in a freezer, or they worked on an HVAC, and then we, I would just simply send in a final tax statement. We had some here, but they were, there was a higher threshold that we viewed, and Bernie had the girls used, and that's what they went by, any SBA projects or anything of that nature. They want you to do that for everything, and it's just about impossible to do that. I don't think anybody in the state's doing that. That's one release, there's two others that was, I was a former of those maybe four or five years ago. By Amy Willard, whenever she did a presentation at ASBO, you're supposed to get clearance from the West Virginia workforce about workers' comp, I think is what it is, and then there's one for unemployment taxes to make sure that they has paid all their workers' comp and they're paid up on unemployment. I tried to do that five years ago in Logan, and when I called those organizations, they couldn't help me, they didn't even know what I was talking about. So I kind of dropped it. And I never got written up, but nothing ever happened to me about those. But the fact that we didn't have the, the, the final settlement release on the taxes here kind of was disheartening to me, and I'll change that, we'll fix that law, that could be done, and I'll try to use the same threshold I did in Logan for five thousand dollars.
In this, is the requirement not to set a threshold for you for, for accounting?
It may, and I think it's, it's relatively low, but whenever I checked it out with the other county, some of them said, well, I don't get, I don't do any of those because I just don't have enough time.
I mean, if this, if this exists, which apparently does, there must be a threshold that they establish that anything above this, you've got to move, right?
I can check again, I can't remember a dollar amount on that. In section twenty-six, I've read it several times.
I mean, I don't see how they could have such a thing and then not say, you know, you'd be the better manager. It don't need without establishing what the criteria level gives.
Well, I've complained before that they give us this stipulation that you have to do this, and then they don't help us get it done. In other words, when I called those organizations, you know, the unemployment office and the West Virginia workforce, they couldn't give me the information I needed because they didn't know, they said nobody else was done this, but.
Well, this has been state policy eighty-two hundred, so if somewhere in the thing, eighty-two hundred, it would tell you, doesn't?
I don't think it mentions the dollar amount on it. I'm thinking that they want it done on everything.
I don't know how they could cite you without telling you what you had to do, right?
But it, it's built into eighty-two hundred, it's section twenty-six, there's about seven parts to that, three of them deal with, with tax release, unemployment release, and workers' comp. I sent an email into Amy asking her how we can do this, because maybe I've overlooked something, and, and I, I told her that I checked around and not many people, and, oh, nobody I talked to was doing it. But, uh, I didn't name any names. I told her I did do two of them in Logan, and I never got written up.
Uh-oh.
But, uh.
Now we don't. They've already had their.
Well, I called Logan, and they said, hey, did you get written up for this? Because I know I didn't do it. And they said, no, so it was a different group looking for different things. Ironically, when I talked to Amy, I was chatting her on the computer, and I said, well, who do I talk to that can tell me how to get this done? She said Paula Fredly did it in Fayette County, guess who was the one who audited it? Paula Fredly from Fayette County, she was the one that wrote this up. So I, I've been some messages into Paula, and I haven't heard that yet. But I, I'll correct it one way or another.
Well, how often do you post checks if they pay this tax, or want to have a check?
It was, I did it based off every purchase order.
How many was the law fight?
It's kind of vague, it just says that before you issue, issue final clearance on, to a contractor for work completed, you must check to make sure that they paid their taxes, they paid, you know. What somebody had told me was that if they had a blanket PO for an HVAC contractor to work on their HVAC units all year long, when they get to June, that last invoice, they submit the request to see if they paid their taxes, not the other people, just the taxes. And what, what I did in Logan, which it wasn't a whole lot of work, but with every PO I did it because we wouldn't do blankets for a particular contractor that do work all year long.
But I think what Fred said, a contractor might pay the, the quarter, the first quarter's taxes, not pay the next one, that wasn't that one that they.
Well, there, there were several checks that I held, and then people didn't get paid, and I finally just voided their checks a year later. But they knew they hadn't paid, but they didn't argue with me, so. But I'll, I'll check into it, I'll see what Paula said back to me, because I asked her that day she was here, and she did give me a whole lot of detail how she did it, but I don't think she did it. Some people in her staff and maybe some of her directors were the ones doing it. Because if you checked on every single one, that's three transactions you gotta check with, it, it, it's just kind of ridiculous. And I think the goal here is to satisfy any auditor who comes in and making sure, so I'll talk to David and see what he says, because if, if she found this, then David's gonna say, you know, the state auditor's office, he's probably gonna say something as well. But they've been in here for years, and I don't think that that was an issue before.
Still under, uh, standard, uh, six, function C, personnel, we had rated ourselves as accomplished. The O E P A team agreed, with the work that we're doing in that area, we're accomplished. Under function D, data information systems, technology tools and infrastructure, again, as a county office team, we've rated ourselves accomplished, the O E P A team agreed, and rated us as accomplished. Under standard seven, continuous improvement. Says in high-quality districts, there's a collective commitment to collaborate, identify, plan, implement, monitor, evaluate, communicate the changes necessary to continuously increase student learning. And this standard really goes back and ties into standard three. We, we had rated ourselves accomplished in this area, and the O E P A team during their visit, and this, and this was taken into account during the entire visit, so not just a central office visit, but the information that they gleaned when they were out in the schools bumped us down to emerging in this area. So, um, again, part, part of this, the frustration that we have is that, you know, we feel like we're doing everything that we, that we possibly can with what resources we have, provide our teachers with what they need to be successful with the standards and the assessment. It talks about the team was unclear how the school system engaged in ongoing monitoring the student performance data. That's been an issue too with the smarter balance assessment. There's not really any, uh, data that is readily accessible to school districts to dig into like we had with the West testing years past. You really have to dig in there deep to find out any, any kind of data on individual students, the kind of work that needs to take place in order to make informed instructional decisions. So that's been an issue, you know, we've had to look at programs out there in many schools as a means to benchmark our students or test our students, kind of see where they are performing in each one of these standards. You know, I, I agree that this is an area that we need, we need to do some more work. And, you know, another piece of this, with dwindling budgets, we just found out Friday that federal program is being cut ten percent for next year, and what that's gonna mean in terms of personnel is, is due to not continue to have work. You know, we, we have to be mindful of the fact that one few dollars that we have, we need to make sure that we're spending it in a, in a manner. to make sure that we're spending it in a manner in which we're going to get the best return on our investment. And if the standards continue to be revised, and assessments change, you know, how much time, effort, money do we want to put in those activities? The end result's going to be, that everything's going to be, so that's part of our struggle, and that's kind of where we are with this. So, and of course, you know, we were the first county with a D F school, I said Mason, because I think Mason had a D school, to get a visit from O E P A. I learned today that some of the hoops that you typically would have to jump through as a county, having a D or F school, or any schools that have a grade below a C, is not really required this year. This is a year for people to kind of get a feel for what this is going to be, you know, over the next few years moving forward. Well, the only requirement on the school system is that we have to adjust or revise our strategic plan, and we have 90 days to do so. Does it require the state board's approval of the revisions we make, or the state department's approval? When I talked to Susan O'Brien at O E P A this morning, she just indicated to me that she or someone on her staff will go onto the strategic plan website and just look to see that we've revised our plan. So no one's really going to dig in to look at what we're doing, they're just going to verify that we've done and they made revisions. Okay. And then Section Two gets into our needs analysis, capacity building, efficiencies. There weren't any areas of concern there for the O E P A team. We mentioned the fact, you know, the fact that we're losing state aid, local funding due to what's going on with the decreasing enrollment numbers that we have, reduction in Medicaid funding, those are all areas that the O E P A team was aware of and agreed, you know, were concerned, but we're handling that situation very well as a board, as well as administrative staff. Of course, we talked about the next area, about the need for, you know, professional development, particularly for our special education teachers. As I've shared with you before, although our enrollment continues to drop overall, our special education numbers remain strong. So that's, that's an area that we need to continue to be mindful of as we move forward, as well as the impact that's seen out there with the number of foster children, children being taken out of these homes, with these drug busts are being made, red in paper of the day, I think that number's up to 24% now across the, across the state, number of students, children, or of school-aged children who are now living in a foster home setting. And that's a phenomenal, that's a crazy number. It's, you know, all related to the drug epidemic, of course, that's taken place. The next area is best practices, every, every county, as well as the schools out there, were able to put forth their best foot, if there was an area for which that you felt like you were doing something that was above and beyond what anyone else out there was doing. We had a best practice that we had shared with the team. Bill, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think what that's called. Our sensory rooms, that we had, Westham Elementary School, as well as Ranger, that's in the way. Anyway, it's, it's something that we, that we feel like no one else out there is really doing right now, and we asked the team to take a look at it, and for whatever reason, it kind of slipped through the cracks, like it didn't happen while they were here, they didn't look at it. So they've sent us a list of questions, we're responding to those questions so that they can take a look at this, and I'm hopeful that we'll actually, that we will end up being recognized for what we're doing. Ricky, Dr. Loda will be here at the next board meeting, and she'll talk about this, she'll share with you kind of what we're doing in that area. It's really, it's great. And then the next area deals with policy and code, and I, and I'm happy to say that we were fully compliant in every area. We had every single policy that's required, the board has jumped through those hoops. I'm going to look to see, that policy, wherever, I was up ahead of myself, just a little. Sorry about that. Or maybe not. No, no, so I just wanted to point out to you that we were fully compliant in each one of the areas. Initially, they had marked this as partial compliance under Policy 2340, which is our measurement of academic progress, a requirement that we keep hard copy documentation of our 326 reports, and that's, that's just a list of students and their accommodations on the assessment. We did not have that in hard copy form, but we, we did discover after the fact that we had that information electronically. And I contacted Susan O'Brien, and she accepted that information.
So that didn't change?
She's gone and made revision to that.
So there's four.
That will change. I guess now would be a good time just to mention the fact that there's still that process is still being undertaken. Anything that we questioned is maybe was inaccurate. There is a process where I contact Susan O'Brien, either I call her, or I send her an email with my documentation, or rationale why, you know, what was reported was inaccurate, not only at the county office level, but also at the school level. So all those, although those reports are now posted on O E P A's website, there's still an opportunity for us to submit information that we call Susan and her, and her staff to go in and make revisions. And I've been on the phone with her today, there's going to be some revisions made as a result of my conversation with her today regarding Hamilton PKX report. There were some inaccuracies contained within that report, and Susan is working on that. So that process, and then Mr. Presley, I was talking about this before the board meeting, you know, just the fact that these reports become public, and we really don't have an opportunity out ahead of this, you know, this happening, for us to share anything that we think needs to be revised.
State board exception.
State board exception. According to Susan O'Brien, the only thing she can do, so she can go in there and she can make all these, all these revisions, she has the authority to do so. What she can't do is go in and change a rating. So if the team rated a school, or rated a central office, county office in a certain area, that's locked unless she would think that it needed to go back to the state board. Only the state board can approve rating changes. So I didn't know that until I talked to her at the end. Let's see, after the policy and code, we get into school ratings that were lower to unsatisfactory. Let me find that page. Seventeen? Thanks, Peter. Okay, yeah, I'll take seventeen. Actually, at the very top of that page, it talks about action required to be addressed in the district strategic plan, because we were lower to a rating of emerging in Standard Seven. That goes back to what I had mentioned to you previous, or a few moments ago. We have 90 days to go in and make a revision that would address that area, and the fact that we were merged, or were lowered to emerging. Schools out there will have to do the same thing, as I get, Mr. Presley and I kind of talked about that before the meeting. I'm not sure what that's going to look like, and what their timeline will be, but at no point in time will any of those revisions require state approval, state department approval. Anything the schools will do, we will verify here at the central office, and O E P A will just go in and look to see that the district plan's been revised. So no feedback or anything related to that. School ratings lowered by the onsite team to unsatisfactory. Westham Elementary School was Standard One, and as well as Standard Six? Yeah, and both of those pertaining to cleanliness of the building, and a concern about the annex, the classrooms outside, that those rooms were unlocked the entire venue visit, which I have no explanation why that would have happened, because when we do our walkthroughs, I had to knock on the door to get in those rooms, so for whatever reason, it didn't happen at that instance. Those were the only two unsatisfactors that we received. Obviously, it's unfortunate that happened, and that is an issue that must be addressed. School ratings lowered by the onsite team to non-compliant, you know, there really wasn't any reason for any school to be non-compliant, except for this 326 reports, and that goes back to when Mr. Daley was our, our technology director, assessment coordinator. I don't think he knew that it was a requirement that we have a hard copy, and I know it's not, it certainly wasn't something that you knew, because when Jonah was interviewed, you know, he shared that that was not something that we had in place or required to. So a couple of schools got deemed in that area for not having those 326 reports. You know, I couldn't help but smile when I saw that Harts, Debbie, Debbie Dean's principal reported that the building was funded through School Building Authority. So I don't know what she was thinking at that. And I haven't had a chance to talk to her about that, but obviously that school is funded through School Building Authority. So anyway, it's just a simple, one-page report. We worked hard to make sure that our principals had this documentation, so I'm not sure why, for whatever reason, that it wasn't readily accessible for the O E P A team when they came in, that it wasn't. But, but, you know, we were, we're really compliant in all of these areas. And some of what you're reading is also part of what I'm sending to Susan, and this possibly will go away as a result of what I'm sharing. The next area is just school ratings that were lowered to emerging, and it's a listing of every, every school across the county, and any of those standards for which they were lowered.
Once again, what does a school have to do if they've been lowered to emerging?
One requirement that I'm sure of, because it says so in their individual reports, that anything that was marked as, or dropped to emerging or unsatisfactory has to be addressed in the strategic plan.
Their plan?
Yeah. But what I don't know is what kind of timeline they're in, because it's not really spelled out in code, and when I talked to Susan today, I was more fixated on the county's plan than what we were discussing, and I didn't ask her about the school plans, but I'll follow up with her. And we'll make sure that we, that we do what we're asked, required. You know, overall, areas that the O E P A team felt like we needed to address was short and long-term planning. Now, I'm not sure why that became such a focus of this particular visit, and I have to tell you the subjectivity of these visits, because those teams varied from one school to the next. For whatever reason, seemed to be more of a focus for some of those O E P A teams that's in those buildings than others, but they, that, as a, as a whole, those teams really honed in on looking at the teacher's lesson plans to see that not only were they planning from week to week, but they were planning like from a month out, you know, unit plans of that nature, curriculum maps over the course of the year. When I went back and looked, because what I did is I took every school's report over the weekend, sat down, went back to the first report they received two years ago, we were accomplished at every school in that area, planning, two years ago. And this time, only one school was accomplished, seven were emerging. Again, I don't know why that became...
Different team members were here two years ago, right?
Right, that's right, different team, different team at that time. So that's, that's something that we're going to have to take a look at, because it really ties into what we've been talking about earlier, Sealy, about the planning process. Some of these, we've been hearing them for years, and I've been, this is my 30th year in education, a use of variety of instructional strategies, how many times that showed up in reports? That's an area we need to work on. Utilization of data to make instructional decisions was another area that come up several times throughout those school reports. Improve the PLCs in school leadership teams. That's not an area for what you've been around for a great number of years, that's probably been walking the last 10 years. So these professional learning communities, just about the work that takes place when those teachers are meeting, whether it's grade-level teams, or it's across grade-level teams, or it's the school's leadership teams, that they need to be focused more on instructional decision making, and looking at data, as opposed to whatever other areas or conversations that they had that the O E P A, O E P A team picked up on when they looked at the minutes and agendas from those meetings. So what happened, these meetings are all, they're taking place in every school, the O E P A team thinks, or feels like there should be more of a focus on instruction. And we talked about the issue with the cleanliness in a couple of our schools. So, you know, for the, for the county office visit, this was one was established as a baseline visit. So the information that we have here, once recorded, when O E P A comes back in four years, and it'll be back in 2020, for a cyclical review, whoever is part of O E P A at that time, and mindful that this doesn't change, because it possibly could, that group will look at this report and will make a comparison, any areas for which we have made improvement since this first visit, this initial visit. So that's what happened with the schools this time. The schools received their second visit, a follow-up to the visit they had two years The, what's changed in all of this in the meantime, for all of us, is the A F grading system and its implications as part of these visits. Some of this is still yet to be figured out, to be worked out. Share with Mr. Presley, we're still not sure what the state department's role is going to be, what kind of assistance are going to provide to schools that are B F schools, as well as the work that Risa would, would be involved in providing those schools. So hopefully, we'll get some, some direction sometime over the next few months in those And then those last few pages of this report lists every school, how the schools rated So then, this page right here, so I guess it's like the last third page from the back. So what you see there are the self-ratings for each individual school, and each one of the standards that I just walked you through with the county visit. And it shows that, so under Doval PKA, Positive Climate and Cohesive Culture, school rated themselves accomplished, the team, O E P A team also rated them accomplished. So you can go through there, you can see they've compiled at the very top of that page, the overall numbers. We had eight distinguished across the county, 130 areas were accomplished, 52 emerging to unsatisfactory. Stands out to me is that 72% of all the standards that were reviewed as a school district were either accomplished or above. If you look at the very far right-hand columns, you see ratings raised. So in three instances across the school district, the O E P A teams bumped up the team's self-rating. However, 30 or 65 ratings were lowered. And I just wanted to share that part of what happened there is that when the school teams met, just like we did as a county team, and self-rated themselves in each one of those areas, they went back and looked at the O E P A team's ratings from two years ago. So if they were accomplished at that time, and... So if they were accomplished at that time, and nothing had really changed in terms of the work they were doing, they rated themselves, the teachers, administrators rated themselves as accomplished. So they end up getting knocked down in some instances. And I argued with Susan around the day she was here, that just because evidence that was shared two years ago is still evidence two years later, you know, that shouldn't be an issue or concern for some of them, especially if it's effective and it's meeting the needs of our students, so. Jeff, can I add something?
You sure can do.
Two years ago, a lot of our schools marked their self-emerging, and the team moved them up to accomplished. And that's true. So they didn't want to move theirself down when they really thought they was emerging, but that first team come in and said, no, no, you have enough evidence, you're the accomplished. So it was two different teams. And if the team moved you up, you'd say, well, they moved you up, they think I'm accomplished, I will stay there.
I could just add to that one thing. We were told that if you lower your ratings from what the team initially gave you, we're going to think that you're just trying to pad your increases, essentially. So that's no good. You don't do that, because if we don't give you accomplished, don't take yourself back down to emerging just so that we raise you back to accomplished.
Now, the fact that if you're knocked down to emerging, that requires a revision to your strategic plan. I'm fearful that moving forward in the future, that the schools are just going to rate themselves emerging. And they'll leave it, either the O E P A team can say, Jeff, you're emerging, or they will have to bump you up. So I, you know, it's a game.
You know, have to change your plan.
Yeah, that's right. And I want to say this, I think it's good to have another set of eyes on what we're doing. It's obvious to me with this visit, this O E P A visit, and I've been through several, that this was not a gotcha visit. It was truly a visit to look at the work that we're doing as a board, as a central office staff, to support our teachers. Now, you know, the fact that it can be subjective, it's not a perfect system, you know, that's part of, you know. But all in all, there were some really good recommendations made here, some areas that we know that we need to look at and focus on moving forward. So again, all in all, I feel like we had a good visit and a good report. Any questions? I didn't mean to take so long. And Jonah's going to harass me because it took me.
Well, I think I still have his four, five minutes.
He gets 10 minutes.
What training has the O E P A investigative team had prior to their visit?
Well, that's a great question. There are team leaders, and these are people who get intensive training. So there is one person who's a team leader. Most of these are typically people who are retired from the system, you know, either as administrators or principals or work at the central office. But the other members of the team, it could be someone from our office, it could be people that are on our principals or our teaching staff out there, and they get, those folks get training right before they come into the county. So like the very evening before that they receive training. So in a perfect world, it would be the same groups of people going out there and visiting every school across the state. But that's not how, that's not how it's set up and designed to work. I do know that Susan told me that it was a challenge because it was so close to Christmas when we received, our schools received their visit, that she was having a difficult time finding people to participate. And I know even at the county visit, when it occurred, of course, before the Christmas break, we didn't know until today that we gave our presentation, who was coming. We had no idea, other than a couple of people's names had been given to us who would be here the next day, until they, until they... Well, one of us, well, two ladies, we didn't know they showed up, so.
You have kind of hit upon my reason for asking that question. Sounds to me like any of the dinosaurs that might still be around. You remember the old North Central evaluations of, remember that? People were just kind of shirked up on the spur of the moment, sent out to the school with practically no instruction or training in advance. I know I've served on those. I know this, you know, you're going to be on an evaluation team. No training, no instruction. Your good common sense, I guess. So you're saying that some of these people could have been pulled out at the last minute?
That happened in some instances. And you know, the O E P A executive director, Susan O'Brien, and her staff are very good. Like if they are interested in anyone from Lincoln County serving on an audit in another county, they'll contact me, let me know who it is, make sure I'm okay with a participant. Like, for example, Don Davis is in Campbell County. Sitting next week, he's been asked, I agree, I think it'd be good. I think it's good for our folks to see what's going on in other school systems, so.
And to learn the testing process inside now, or not testing, the rating process.
I called some of my colleagues to find out, because when I, you know, kind of upset me when I first got to this school that we were deemed in that area of curriculum and assessment. I asked them, I asked my buddies what they were doing, and they told me they were waiting on Lincoln County. Not much help, but.
Can I just say the Christmas excuse is?
That's going away.
I mean, Christmas didn't creep up on the O E P A. It's been on the calendar for about 2,000 years, okay? They criticize Hamlin for having the second grade play, which is an institution at that school. I mean, it's a huge, it's a huge deal, you know? And it's a wonderful part of the day. I mean, I just think it's unfair to hit the school on something like that when you're, when the organization is scheduling the visit for the last two days of the school year, it's just...
Well, you hit the nail on the head, and I had a conversation with Susan today, and that's going to be stricken from the report.
Okay, okay.
It may be gone now.
And how, when does the strickening, when, I mean, I purely reported on the central office findings in today's paper, because they were pretty positive, and I stayed away from each school and said I'll get to those over the coming weeks. But I don't want to, and I'd be, I'd be pretty kind, I try to be, but if this is, if this is going to keep changing, when is it safe for me to report on each school, do you think? Or should I just check with you?
Won't you check with me, because this seems to be fluid as we, as we work through this, and the principals continue to share information with me. I will tell you that the report for Hamlin PKA was not indicative of what we see out there. We were all quite surprised when Susan shared out some of the findings and recommendations. So I anticipate that there'll be several revisions to that school's report when it's all said and done. There was questions raised at the high school that I've already been back and forth with Susan, and revisions have been made in their report. There were some concerns about what was reported at Duval, that I'm still waiting on Mrs. Patton to give me some information. So yeah, if you'll, if you'll check back with me, at some point in time, I'll know when this process is...
I'll highlight to you what I think is sensitive in my story, and we can see if it's still relevant or not at that time. Okay, that's cool.
On that particular one shot, obviously, schools do activities like that in preparation for different things, Christmas. Like I mentioned, Jeff, even if the school had wanted to, and that class wanted to, they have bank time, that they can do things outside of that anyway, you know, that are pretty... So decide them on the day before Christmas break is...
And it's a huge, I mean, it's a big deal, because we were through it last year, you know? It's a great thing, it's kind of a rite of passage for the second graders, you know?
Well, you can talk about wanting to bring parents and community people in school as well. They want to come, so their kids participate in things and all plays. Well, you just don't do that without a little practice.
No, you don't.
And also be co-correct, if you have art, music, C S Os, that'd all play right here.
If you got the opportunity to respond to that ahead of time.
That's one of those, we all kind of raise our eyebrows when everything's reported.
We didn't talk about it ahead of time, what a time to have this review of the school, for maybe before Christmas break.
And I had that conversation with Mrs. O'Brien out in front of the visit. She assured me, she understood the timing wasn't the best, but she also assured me that wouldn't have any impact on our reports as well. And it reared its head at Hamlin as well as the high school. There was a report, or something reported in the high school about attendance, the day before Christmas being low. That was completely inaccurate. I don't know how that information even... So I was able, Kevin was able to pull the attendance for me that day, it wasn't even close to what was shared or what was reported, so. Anyway, I, again, I don't want to be negative about this, I'm trying not to be. Again, there is some subjectivity to what goes on, but there was actually, a lot of this, these reports were pretty much dead on what we've seen when we've been out there in those buildings. We did everything we possibly could do. I don't know what else we could have done to prepare the schools for these, for these visits.
Aside from sending a special janitorial team everywhere, staying with the weekend? Aside from, and get caught doing it, you know? Just send them two weeks of things.
Yeah, I honestly, I...
Everybody would be clean.
Four years.
Well, I think the important thing here, Jeff, is that there's a purpose in them coming here to see what we are doing with the school system, and I think they found that generally we're doing the things we should be doing. Everybody's going to do things absolutely perfectly, and you do all, everyone can improve in whatever you do. And sometimes, that's what I first think to point out.
Like I said, I did through several O E P A visits while I've been in the school system, going back to the time that they came in and took our school system open. So I know what those visits were like, I lived it, and some of you did as well. This is entirely different. This process, I don't have an issue with. No system's perfect, but I think this is a much better indication of what's happening in our schools.
I was involved in it when it first started.
Yeah, I know, yeah. At least, you know, you know, that was kind of nitpicky about the Christmas plan. You know, Bill and I laugh about this all the time. You know, back in the 90s, was it 99, 2000? There was pea gravel growing, or grass growing through the pea gravel, the hamlin.
Poison ivy in the flower bed at Midway, and Kennesaw was allergic to poison ivy.
And someone resembling a bus driver at Guy Valley was smoking a cigarette. So we've come a long way.
And the paralyzic ranger was too close to the school, and they have a flu.
All right, I missed me, if anybody have anything else?
Okay, I guess it's your turn, Mr. Adams.
10 minutes, John.
I see he's a little bit more technologically...
Yeah, we actually, we had a conversation.
Very stylish PowerPoint sometime.
Gordon, do you know what it is?
For the record, I think somebody was counting, that was 51 minutes and 35 seconds.
Thank God Jeff took that topic and not you.
Well, I was getting ready to add, making sure that I was right.
I know, he missed that.
I was making sure that I was right, I was getting ready to say it's good to be presenting their annual LSIC presentation following Mr. Roy. Well, Mr. McKinnon knows that I wouldn't let that go up. You see much grief over my timeliness in presentations.
Jonah, aren't there always conversations with principals for LSIC presentations?
There is, there is. There is.
Some listen, others don't.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay, just a quick update. I really don't plan to take a lot of time for those, I'm sure that you're glad to hear that. Regarding assessment. There we go. This, just a comparison, I know it's kind of hard to see, I didn't want to make a bunch of slides. But what you see here is a comparison between the 2014, 15, and 15, 16 school years in regards to the general sum of assessment. So year before last and last year's scores compared across grade levels in mathematics and as well as in English Language Arts. You can see there were a few drops, but overall, a lot of increases as well. I know that Mr. Bailey gave you a brief update, I believe, back when this data first came out. Again, just wanted to review this just a little bit. Grade three mathematics, a pretty good jump from around 32 to up to 40%. A little decrease in grades four and five. Fairly small increase there in sixth grade, seventh grade. But you go over here, a big increase in grades 10 and 11. Some work being done there at Lincoln County High School that I think is important to note. And I know Mr. Mathis has been working closely with Jill Ziegler, I believe that's her name, she came down and did some work with that math department there at Lincoln County High School. Over in, over here in the areas of English Language Arts, seen a big drop in grade time. Something that I've planned to investigate, haven't had the time to do so, but grade five overall, we've seen drops in Language Arts and math. Which again, is I think is something to be important to note. Also in grade eight, grade, and grade 11, well, grade six as well, see some pretty big gains. Again, that's kind of a mixed bag across the board in terms of losses and gains. The gains we did make were pretty significant. So also in the area of science, it'll stay the same, a little bit of, a little bit of decrease in grades four and six, but a little bit increase in grade 10. So again, that's, that's, that data was, in the past couple of years, we're getting close to this year's assessment season. That window is getting ready to open, it's getting ready to get real fun there in the assessment office. Any questions on that data? Now, here's the, perhaps the most up-to-date current information, this talking about our interim diagnostic assessments. Three types of assessments. You have the interim comprehensive assessments, which this is a broad comprehensive assessment. This assesses the same standards just as we would with the general sum of assessment. Kind of, if you would, it would be a benchmark at the beginning of the year that we could administer countywide, that teachers could, or schools could administer, to kind of get an insight of to where kids are when we're starting the school year. The interim assessment blocks, these focus on smaller sets of targets, and they're more flexible to better support instruction. In other words, the interim comprehensive assessment, it's a little, it's broad, okay? And this, these interim assessment blocks, they kind of, they kind of narrow the focus just a little bit to smaller sets of standards. And then finally, you have the diagnostic assessments, and these are structured like the interim assessment blocks up here, but they're even, they're focused on even smaller sets of targets and standards. And so what you have is something that will kind of look like this. You start out broad with this interim comprehensive assessment, I feel like I'm blocking the TV here. And then you can kind of drill down whatever issues or challenges that students may be having using the interim assessment blocks, and then take those down just a little further using those diagnostic assessments.
These are state department-developed assessments that are supposedly fall in line with the smarter balance assessment, the summative assessment at the end of the year.
Correct.
And all of our schools are using, are utilizing these assessments over the next couple of months. Our window to take the summative assessment opens?
April 22nd.
So it's not that far off that we're going to be testing.
Very close. We're actually, go ahead.
And this is part of the justification or rationale, according to the State Department, for individual school districts to not be out here developing our own benchmark assessments. But that's what these are for, that, you know, we just be duplicating effort.
Correct. Here's our current usage. Didn't, I didn't display any data, any, as far as achievement data here for individual schools or students. That data is available, and I would be glad to share that with you one-on-one. Just wasn't anything that I felt that we should make public. But these are the number of students that have tested at least one block on the interim assessments across grade levels. assessments across grade levels. Now, I do want to, this doesn't look like a real high use, well, it's not a real high usage. However, there wasn't a real clear picture as to what these assessments were until back in December, we had Dr. Stacy Mural come down from the State Department, did a training with the principals and some folks from their schools that they brought with them. Again, they were out there, but there never had really been a clear definition on how do we use these, what do we use them for? So once that happens, a lot of positive feedback from the schools saying, you know, now that we kind of understand these just a little bit better, see what these can be used for, we will begin to use those. Same thing here on diagnostics. Again, this is the even more focused exam that schools can administer. These are the number of students that have taken at least one diagnostic. Assessment trainings, November 9th, we had the claim, claim and target data disaggregation. I showed principals at our November principals meeting how to break their data down in the time site, it's called the assessment portal, how that they could actually find the information, find their data broken down by claims and targets, not just how many students were proficient or not proficient in the whole test, but to actually break this down just a little bit further. On December 6th, again, we had the interim diagnostic assessment training. They came down, did a fantastic job on explaining what those were, why we should use them. And the most important piece of this, and Mr. McKiff, Mr. Limble can verify this, was the difference that it makes when students use these exams or these assessments prior to taking the general sum of assessment. Several case studies done out there, pretty big, or pretty significant differences in schools that had used these and schools that had not. And more so than anything, it familiarizes students with the test. Kind of gets them geared up just a little bit. They've seen the format, they know what to expect when they get in here. Also, on December 6th, she went into airways reporting, and I'm going to talk about that here in just a minute. This is a new tool that the American Institute of Research, which does our test for us, it's a new tool that they've created. This breaks it down, and I'll get into that here in just a minute. We have the DLM examiner training coming up on Thursday. This is for our students, special education students or special needs students who are on alternate assessment. It's dynamic learning maps. And then here, a couple months, month and a half or so away, we'll be doing our West Virginia General Sum of Assessment building level coordinator training. That's the big training where we train principals and usually a counselor or an assistant principal that they bring with them. They in turn go back and train the teachers in their building. This is all part of policy 2340.
Joe, would you explain a little bit, claim and target about the standards?
Claims and targets, yes, well, Mr. Limble. Claims and targets. Claims are broader categories. For example, in English Language Arts, you have speaking and listening, you have writing, you have reading skills. These are, in math, you have number systems.
Reasoning.
Reasoning. These are the standards kind of chunked. Then you get down into the targets, which are the more specific standards, you know, maybe two or three standards under one target under each claim. Here is the airways reporting, and again, I know that picture is kind of small, I don't have any way to blow that up. But what this does, I was introduced just this past fall, and provides teachers and administrators with a more pinpointed view of student data. And if you were familiar in those days with the individual item analysis, it breaks down by each student, the item that they got wrong on one of the interim assessment or diagnostic assessments tells you why they got it wrong. In other words, it shows you the question, it shows you how they answered it, and it shows you the correct answer, which gives, which empowers teachers to know, okay, what is it that, what is it that this student needs in order to be successful with this particular item or with this particular concept? And so that's something that's been needed. Ever since this assessment has changed, we all said that the data just, there's not enough data there. You know, you get an overall snapshot of who's doing well and who's not, but we don't know why or how. So this is a very important piece for that. And so again, that was just introduced this fall. Schools are beginning to use that, we're starting to see that information being broken down or being used, I guess, to make instructional decisions. Going back with what Mr. McKiff reported out regarding the OEDA report, a lot of the things that they said weren't there, we haven't had. I mean, that's not an excuse, that's just, that's a reality. And finally, we're getting now to where we have the tools and the data available to us to make more data-informed decisions.
As well, we continue to provide ideas around the metrics for the AF grading system, where we're going to get our biggest bang for the buck in terms of, enable the schools to get that C, the A.
Right.
At some point in time. So this all is intertwined and connected to those grades.
And there's a piece here that I did not, yes, there's a piece here, I actually just created this slide because I'd just seen the update, and I thought that this was important. Policy 2340 is being updated. It's out for, it's out for public review on the State Department website. Policy 2340 is the testing assessment policy. And it's out there for you to look at. A couple of things that I wanted to point out, and I hope I'm not opening a can of worms or anything to that effect, but just wanted to point a couple of things out. There is removal of the language regarding the ESEA flexibility waiver approved on May 20th in 2013. That was taken out. There is removal of the school grade designation language under West Virginia Accountability Index, and addition of language regarding student success indicators. Now, again, this is all just, this is all just recently came out within the past few days. These are some changes that are being made. I can only theorize why that some of this language is being removed, and I won't give that because that's probably just personal opinion. There is the addition of language, and I know Mr. McKiff already alluded to this, but there is addition of language to regarding the West Virginia end-of-course exams. And the changing language of the next, not nest, next generation content standards to state-approved standards. So probably laying some groundwork, this is my theory and my thoughts, laying some groundwork as we don't know what's going to happen in the legislative session, and maybe just kind of laying some groundwork to be prepared in the event that there's any changes. That would be my best guess. Was that, Mr. Priestley?
I said, "in the event."
In the event, that's right. So, for any questions?
There's one on the window for testing. What is that again?
Starts, and I'm sorry, it's April 17th due to spring break and some other OS days. We kind of had to put those in there to ensure that we have the 25.
Well, we can await when's the other.
When does it end?
Last instructional day.
Last instructional day. You have 25 days and then five days for makeup.
So we take over the Wednesday.
17th of the 20th of the year.
Last instructional day.
Now, that could change. We're not going to have any snow, but in the event that we have a lot of snow, we would have to cancel and we would have to adjust our calendar, and that window would change.
Well, that goes with the last instructional day.
Yes, that would just stay with the last instructional day.
All right. Any questions? Anything else from Mr. Joe? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think you beat 51 minutes.
14 minutes and 13 seconds.
I was going to say, you only went over your allotted 10 minutes, about 50 percent.
Well, not close to 5, it rounds down.
You were over about 50 percent. No, 430 rounds to 5.
No, 14, 13, 14.
You have to make it up the next time.
I got 14, 40.
Ray, you haven't gone up yet. I wouldn't say anything.
Yeah, that's right.
Ray, if you're on the 31st, give his report.
I don't know, we may have an improv.
And there's no way to be me being brief up here.
Okay. All right, appreciate the information received from Mr. McKiff and Mr. Ray. I'm sure we'll have four on both of those kinds of things. Let's go to the administrative section. I have a motion to look at those items. Mr. Whuperson. Second, Mr. Curry. 50.
Item A, out of state travel for the following personnel. Item B, out of state trip from Lincoln County High School seniors to Cedar Point, Ohio on May 22nd, 2017, transported by private coach with all expenses paid by the group. Item C, school volunteers who on occasion may also service by chapter roads for athletic events, active competitions with school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation.
Any questions down here? If not, is that an all yes vote for the administrative items?
Yes.
The finance sector, if that motion's pleased. I'll be, I'll be. Next one, here. Now, Mr. Ellis.
Schedule of invoices totaling $580,000 and...
Uh-oh. Say you just...
It's the best part of the time.
8:51.
8:51, and 76 cents. If you notice on there, we added the location code, and I got a little cheat sheet if you want that, so you can track that down if you want to see what invoices are being paid for this location. It's nearest, next to last column, LOC at the top. So that gives folks some requests. We finally were able to get together, Robin and I, and get that done, so.
I'm sure Ms. Priestley.
Squeezed it together, but that's good. Appreciate that.
Well, I could probably do more if something's got to go.
No, we don't need to take away that. We need to keep increasing.
Yeah, but those invoices are in our office. If you ever have a question, just give me a call.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, first no questions then. Is that an all yes vote on the finance items? Okay, all yes votes. Get a personnel then. Motion, please. Ray.
Item A, appointment of service personnel. Item B, transfer of service personnel. Item C, one of the extracurricular personnel. D, resignation and retirements. Underneath that, we have abolish extracurricular service posting ESC 117-20 bus aid. We have, we're advertising for, we need an aide to ride the bus in the morning and the evening. One of our bus drivers that was in the accident that lost her finger, she's going to come back and work light duty, so she will be, she's going to serve as an aide on there. That way, we won't have to hire anyone, and she can do that. Also, respectfully, I ask you to accept the addendum on the next page. We left this off, appointment of short and long-term substitute professional personnel.
You need that, Mr. McKiff.
Yes, sir.
More than all Americans. Okay. Okay, if anybody have any comments, questions about the personnel items. Do you want, just, you gave us a handout, is the staff and things.
Yeah, if you look, we only have one position that we don't have candidates for, and that's Hartz Health and PE. We're waiting on interviews at Duke Law for the math teacher. And who would have said health and PE teacher, you couldn't find one, we're never going. Our goal was to not be read on this, I hope no one leaves this.
All right, great. Okay. Are any questions about the personnel? And is that an all yes?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments, concerns? Board members? Matty? I've got just one informational item for you. Thursday, there's going to be a special board meeting, or a special RISA regional meeting on this Thursday, it'll be a Skype meeting at 1 o'clock on the 19th. And the purpose of this relates to the state audit about RESEs. And I think we've heard a little bit about that before. It's expected that this is going to come up in the legislature. The state audit finding, basically that RESEs need to be, I don't know whether the word eliminated, but what we know is RESEs need to be restructured with a possible lot of changes, which could mean the organization, I guess, be a whole different, that has been like the state auditor's offices. There was a special auditor assigned that, in 17 months, I think Mrs. Hamlin mentioned that, that the RESE directors had a few days to respond to it. But since, I think it was last week, there was a legislative committee meeting, this was presented to them, there was some dialogue went back and forth, the RESE, one of the RESE directors, Mr. Zerbo, represented all the RESE directors with their response to that. Also, the state board president, Green, also had a response to it. It appears that the state board, as well as the RESE directors, take issue with many of the things that are in that audit. As we've talked about before, what the impact it would have on us, we think would just be tremendous. And Jeff and I talked a little bit here off and on about, tried to, and I think Ray's been working on this, what we, what we get from RESE. But I think I like to see, and we talked about this, we know we pay about, what, $25,000 for illegal services, and then return, you know, we have a shared service with other counties. And we're just kind of speculating as to what our legal cost would be rather than if it wasn't for $25,000, what it could be. That could vary, of course. But then there are other areas that we work, and we know that in Medicaid, that we may do things for us. But I've asked Jeff, you know, so that we as a board know, I'd like to know how much we send to RESE for Medicaid to get that service, and it kind of gives us something to compare with. And then computer repair, how much do we pay RESE for the computer repair that they do for us? And then there may be other, here, those are just ones off the top of my head.
Audios. We share an audioliter, supposedly, for $1,000.
Right. Well, then there's the food service director.
Technically, especially.
These are all benefits we get, but I'd like to see the other side of it is, how much do we spend to get these benefits? Because part of the argument may be, well, you know, you're putting out money to get these things, and you could, that's kind of what they're saying, these things could be done in a different way. One, they refer to lead counties, for instance. Who would be the lead county, or who would want to be the lead county? I don't know. To me, if you're the lead county, it almost means that you almost have to have additional personnel to be able to do the things that RESE's doing. Well, if you're doing that, you know, where's anybody saving anything? So this is, but this is something I believe that we're going to hear more and more about. But that's the purpose of this meeting, on a special meeting that we're having on Skype meeting on Thursday, is kind of see where we are. Because at our last meeting, we brought the initial discussions that had just come about, and we just purged the other counties, kind of looking for where they were, what benefits they received from RESE, and what impact it might have on them. So we're going to have kind of a follow-up meeting about that on this Thursday, that's just for the information. Okay. McKiff, we...
I have a list.
He's a bar from the, you know, the...
The pension banks, they were just, they were there before the meeting.
He's moved on.
Lincoln County High School football field bid specs. Spoke today, Ferguson today indicated that those documents should be ready for advertising within the next two weeks. That's entirely up to the board, whether or not the board approves those bid specs. The board has not done so previously. I've heard that, she did more research. So if the board doesn't want to go through the process of formally approving the bid specifications, then we can just, we can let Greg take a look at that information, and if Greg's okay with it, we can score in and advertise.
We don't have to approve the advertising of them?
No.
Tom, the link jar? Yeah. Okay, so we're hopeful that by the end of the month, we should probably be...
It looks like by the end of the month, we should be ready to advertise. Yeah, so certainly by the end of February, if we're not fortunate, we get a bid that comes in, and it's a little bit the amount of money, you know, what we have for that project, we'll be ready to go by 1st of March, which I know Mr. Whuperson said it, which is our ultimate goal. The RAM, I want you to know that, just reminds you that our attorney, Leslie Tyree, will be here at the next board meeting to provide you with an update. She's had at least one meeting with some folks from the Department of Highway, she wants to share that information with you. So I'm looking forward to hearing what she's found out myself. We've not had that discussion, so she'll be on the 31st. We have received our 2017-18 school calendar guidelines, and I took the time this morning to read through that document. It appears that the guidelines have not changed from the past year. Actually, it's simplified the process for going in and creating a calendar, which I greatly appreciate, because it can be, it has been tedious at times, going in there and creating all those different color codes, and it's all done for us now. I just want you all to know, the board to know that I am going to bring the committee together Friday afternoon at 2:00. Joe, I keep looking at him, Joe, is now... Chairman, I keep looking at him, Chairman is now the newest member of the calendar committee, with all these technology skills and that new spreadsheet, I don't think it's going to take us long to come up with a calendar.
Hasn't a calendar essentially been the same the last two years?
That's really been by design, and people, people know, basically, we will start one weekend, and that's, that's what we're going to go with developing this calendar, same mindset. So, we will, again, we'll have to advertise, because we are required to have two public meetings regarding the calendar, and we have until May the 5th, I think, or 7th, to submit our calendar to the State Department for approval. So we're a little ahead of schedule, actually, from where we worked this time last year. Anyway, so I hope to be, having those public meetings soon, maybe the next meeting I'll have some more information. And finally, we have discussed a work session for February the 1st, to look at finances and personnel staffing needs for the next school year, wanted to make sure that the board was okay with that date, because it looks like we, we will be ready on our end.
February the 1st, and what, and if that date's okay, we need to establish the time of day, what would be best for the board.
What day is it?
I think it's going to be...
Will we meet the, like, the day before?
We do, we meet the day before.
Somebody had said 1:00 before.
Is that what we said?
Yeah.
Well, we're going to meet at 1:00 o'clock the day before that Friday. 31st, so, how long do you anticipate this is going to take?
I mean, I don't think it's going to take us long.
Two weekends.
Two weekends. Missed days of work, for me, they go up at night, weekends.
Do you care what time of day it is?
I'd rather not do it mid, at 1:00, that kills my whole day. Do it early or do it late?
How long do you anticipate it?
I do not anticipate this taking long at all, based upon our preliminary work we started to make with our principals.
How do you define long?
I'm, I'm going to say no more than a couple hours, then that, that would be a long time.
Would you like to do it in the morning, like at 9:00?
8:10, 8:07, 6:30. Oh, I'm sorry, don't retire, don't get work this hour anymore.
No, 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 do it early and Bill can have breakfast rolling.
Hot thing.
I forgot about that.
You can do that.
You can do that.
Yeah.
He puts together a breakfast.
February 1 meeting at 9:00, Bill cooks breakfast, sausage, gravy, biscuits, bacon sauce.
That'd be lunch, not a clock.
Hey, I'm up every day, so, if you want to meet 7, I'm good for that.
It's 9:00 AM, good for that.
That gives us a chance too, in case there'd be anything going on out there in the schools when we show up, we could be all the way to 8:00.
We'd be finished before lunch, if that's...
Yes.
That okay, if you're in that room? That sound all right to everyone?
That's correct.
We may not, I prefer sausage pancakes. Most people, maybe we'll provide vegetable soup for you for lunch.
No, no, no.
That's reasonable, I'm going to have breakfast.
Okay. We'll have some.
Now, well, we talked about in the first, the implications, this federal, I think might have on that, though, you don't know everything until we...
Yeah, we, Mr. King, he's away from the office, he'll be back tomorrow, I need to sit down with him, as he wasn't here for the state meeting, share some of this information, so we can sit down, see what the implications appear for our Title I and Title II positions.
All right, have a good night. Just, just a reminder, I guess all, everyone's gotten their email about the ethics forum, now I know, I want to make sure that, right, you may have...
I sent mine in as a hard copy, and then to make sure they received it, I sent an email to them, I asked if they'd received it, then I made a photocopy of the email, but it wasn't...
They're going to think yours is suspicious, just by you doing all of that.
I've got evidence of it received.
All right.
The one question, the snow day...
We, at some point in time, will, will come to the board.
Okay.
I, I will share with you, in past practices, any indication, we'll, we'll start with our OS days first.
Okay.
And the first one being February the 20th.
Okay.
That looks, that appears to be the day that we'll...
It's for me more than they are.
We think the trip's okay so far.
Well, this is August, this year.
So we were kind of waiting to just make sure we didn't miss any more days before we come to the board to approve the makeup things.
Tony has told us we're going to be good, that you get time, and I'm pretty, I'm pretty alive. We're going to hope he's right this time. Okay, well, I'll ask for a motion into adjournment until the 31st at 1:00.
Summative.
Larry Wilkerson. Oh, yeah?
Yes.
All right.